I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01. And as a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the commission, please fill out a blue speaker form and hand it to our city clerk, Jessica Cooper. And Jessica, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Here.
Chair Feng?
Here.
And tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Hovey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, okay, before I move on to number three on the agenda, I'd like to welcome our new Planning Commissioner, Andrea Hovey. She comes to us with a lot of experience. Most of you, if you have not heard of her, she's been very active since the beginning of Eastvale. A resident since 2002, I believe, right? And originate, well, created the town hall meetings that you have heard of. She helped with the incorporation committee as well. And so she's a very active real estate agent as well. So if you have any questions in regards to that or the city, I'm pretty sure she is very knowledgeable. So on behalf of the commission, welcome. Thank you. Okay, and let's see, I won't take up too much time. I always say that, but I lie sometimes. Okay, moving on to number three in public comments. Any member of the public may address the commission on items within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Is there any speakers today?
No, we have not received any.
Okay. Moving on to number four, additions and revisions to the agenda. Any member of staff would like to make any changes?
No, sir, we don't. But I would like you at the end of the meeting to reserve a few minutes and take a photograph of you on the new, in the new location. If you want to stick around for that.
Cool, thank you. Any commissioners would like to make any changes?
None.
Okay. So moving on, this'll be quick. Okay, and on to consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a commissioner, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Jessica, any?
No, we do not have any requests.
Okay.
I move we approve this consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hovey may want to abstain from item 5.1 since you weren't here for that meeting.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
I'm abstaining.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes 4 to 0.
Moving on to public hearings. Let's see here. At this time, we will conduct two public hearing items. If you'd like to speak before the commission, please fill out a blue speaker form and hand it to Jessica Cooper there. And I will call those in order. And please remember you have a limit of three minutes. Thank you. And we will begin with number one, Mr. Norris.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Item 6.1 is an item to revise an existing conditional use permit for corona cattle over in the Chandler area to remove an existing time limit that was imposed when that use was approved by the county. That's currently 2021. Melinda Lim, the planner for that project, is here. And I will hand over the presentation to her.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a conditional use permit amendment for corona cattle. So the area that you see outlined in red is the site of the corona cattle on Chandler Street. Corona cattle has been in operation for over 30 years. It was approved by the Riverside County in 1982 to be a slaughterhouse, and this use requires a CUP. And corona cattle will butcher animals to the specifics of the customer. This includes halal butchering. This CUP amendment solely involves the deletion and additions of conditions. No changes to the operation or the billings are proposed. One of the main conditions being deleted is the condition involving the expiration of the CUP. I, of, yes, the expirations. This expiration date will be February 2021. In addition, any original condition, county conditions, which needed to be satisfied prior to issuance of a permit and any which are not ongoing are also proposed for deletion. Three standard Eastvale conditions which we include in every project would be added. They include that the applicant review and sign the conditions that they shall protect, defend, et cetera, and that the applicant understands and agrees that failure to comply with the conditions will revoke the CUP. In order to approve the CUP amendment, the planning commission must be able to make the following three findings. General plan and zoning code consistency compliance. The use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. And ALA consistency for the use. Additional details are available in the staff report and resolution. Staff sent out notices to property owners within 600 feet of the project site. At the time that the staff report was prepared, we did not receive any comments. Today, we did receive a comment and a copy of it is in front of you. Based on staff's analysis, the three findings can be made. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit amendment subject to the conditions of approval. Listed commissioners are your options to either approve the project with additional changes and/or conditions, to continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions, or to deny the CUP. Staff is prepared to answer any questions from the commission, and the applicant is here as well to, if you have any questions.
Okay, and now I'll open a public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Andy.
Hi, Andy.
Hi, my name is Andy Armande, and I'm the applicant. Were there any questions or concerns?
Well, not at this time. We're still in public hearings. So did you have anything you want to present to us at this time prior?
Uh, no, not at this time, no.
Okay. So, well, then we'll move on. And if we have additional questions, we'll call you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So any public comment?
We have not received any requests for this item.
Okay. So then I'll close public hearing now and open up a commission discussion. Commissioner Hovey, do you have any questions or concerns?
I do not have any questions or concerns.
I get confused, too. It's red.
Yeah, red is on. I do not have any questions or concerns.
And Commissioner Lee?
Just have a quick question for the staff. Was there any reason as to why we're basically not putting any more, basically expiration date on this CUP?
Yeah, I'll answer that from a planner's perspective. Our city attorney can get into more legal details. Basically, expiration dates on use permits are a violation of due process. If the city wanted to revoke a use permit, you would need to bring it back to the planning commission or the council if they approved it and hold a public hearing and show just cause. And if desired, revoke the permit. But I believe it's the city's position that an automatic revocation or an automatic expiration of a permit is not the correct way to do it. Now, that being said, cities and counties all up and down the state do it all the time. I see it a lot. But I think the better legal advice is that you can't just expire a use permit.
I would just say that I think Mr. Norris said that beautifully. I don't think there is anything I need to add there.
Commissioner Charleston?
Well, you kind of took the wind out of my sail then because my feeling is a permit should never be given in perpetuity. That there should be a time limit on it. And I've been dealing with business for 30 years, and I've applied for many, many permits. And there was always a time on it. And we've always had to go back and extend it and ask for an extension and would give granted extensions. Or if the development plan in that area changed where, you know, residential property was being sold, they changed the way we had to do reclamation plans, how quickly we had to do it. So I don't understand that at all.
Well, there's certainly nothing preventing the commission from having a condition that requires the applicant to come back and have the permit reviewed and make sure that the commission makes, you know, the similar find, can make and still makes the similar findings that it has in the past and to generally do a review of compliance with the permit and compliance with community standards and things like that. But having just an automatic expiration without some type of process to go along with that potential expiration is where we run into potential due process concerns.
But I'm still questioning then. So I've done 100 permits at work where I've worked at. And we had expirations on every one of them. And at some point, we knew they were going to expire at a certain period of time. We had to come back in and say, hey, we'd like to extend this permit.
Where we get into, there's a little bit of a legal nuance there is the automatic expiration may be okay if a property owner hasn't developed what's called a vesting right in that conditional use permit. So oftentimes in the issuance of like building permits and things like that where building hasn't started and the applicant or the property owner hasn't made significant progress in the use of that permit, then an automatic expiration can be valid. But when a property owner has made kind of significant progress and expended enough time, money, and resources in order to kind of make use of that permit, that's where they've developed what's called a vesting right. And an automatic expiration of that vesting right carries certain due process concerns.
So then the county was confused when they gave them 20 years then?
Well, as I said, I don't know what legal advice they got. But as I, I've seen this done many times in many jurisdictions all up and down the state. Expiration dates on conditional use permits, expiration dates on development plans. Our code here provides for neither of those. Now, one type of permit that is different that I think you're familiar with being in the construction industry is building permits. They do have expiration dates, so that's built into state law. So if you don't continue working, if you don't start work, as Chad mentioned, or if you don't continue work and continue to get inspections, they can expire. Subdivision maps, again, that's in state law, have an expiration time on them. If you aren't ready to record your map, you have to continually bring it back to the city to extend the lifetime of the map until you run out of extensions, and then the map just goes away. But this type of application, we don't believe is appropriate to have an expiration date on. If, and that's why we put conditions on how they need to operate and standards that they need to maintain. If they don't do that, then that's a reason for us to bring that back in front of the planning commission and say, well, they're not complying with their conditions. They haven't satisfied a certain condition or they're not meeting a certain standard that was established when they were approved. Then we can bring that back. The commission can hold a hearing and determine if they need to revoke the permit.
Yeah, and I have no qualms about the business. I'm very proud that they have been in business that long, you know, in our area. What I am more concerned about is, in the future, as we keep developing, how does this run in line with our development plan? Because there's a lot of things the county did that we have superseded and said, we don't necessarily agree with that. We're not going to continue to do business like that. So that's all I'm concerned about is that, you know, if we're going to put residents all around this business, are we going to choke them out of their life with complaints from the residents that live next door to them? And they've been here for 30 years, you know, is that fair? That's my concern.
Yeah, well, a couple, two or three years ago, we did the Chandler Vision Plan. And this portion of the Chandler area was not envisioned to change very much from what it is, other than to do things like curb and gutter and street upgrades and so on. So this is not a part of Chandler that we see changing in a meaningful way. It's going to stay more or less like it is, only hopefully improve the quality of life for the folks who live out there. From the fire station eastward toward Archibald, now that is supposed to change. And you're going to see the Catholic Church coming in with their plans, hopefully in the near future. We already have an application for a commercial development at the corner. So that part of the Chandler area is envisioned to change. So if this use over there, we probably would have looked at it differently. But given that the city's policy for this portion is not to experience major changes from what's been happening out there for a long time, we thought it was appropriate to leave it there.
Okay. No further, no other questions right now.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Do you have a couple of questions for staff? How much business do they do a year with this type of work?
You know, we have the applicant here, so I think, do you want to answer that question?
What was your name again?
My name is Andy Armande.
Okay.
I'm actually the CFO for corona cattle as well. Roughly, we do, on average, $200,000 worth of business a month.
$200,000 a month?
Yeah. So I would say in the neighborhood of $3 million a year. Now, it could fluctuate, obviously, but those are approximations.
And say, somebody wants to butcher a steer. How much would that run to butcher a steer?
Uh, it just depends on the size and quality, but approximately $1,500 to $2,000.
That's if they bring their own or buy one of yours?
No, that's out of my inventory. If they bring their own, the price is around $100 to $200 to process.
Just curious.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine.
Inspections, what type of inspections do you have to go through?
Well, we're governed by the CDFA, which is the California Department of Food and Agriculture. So we're inspected on a weekly basis through them. We're also, not totally, but kind of governed by the USDA. They do a biannual inspection as well.
Okay. So the health department doesn't inspect your property?
No, we don't sell meat. We butcher carcasses. We don't do cut and wrap as well.
Okay.
We just straight carcass.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, you said you only, you only, you butcher and?
We just butcher and prepare the carcass for cut and wrap. We don't do, basically, that's where they make steaks and pork chops, bacon. Excuse me, all that kind of stuff.
Like small game, big game, or just?
No, just general livestock, cattle, pigs, goats, and sheep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, let's see, what else?
I think there was another question I wanted.
Oh, yeah, just to put on the record, I went by the property yesterday. Just for the record, I walked to the back. When I pulled up, I parked on Chandler. I didn't smell any odor until I walked to the back. They had quite a few livestock in pens in the back. That's when I started to smell something. But the neighbor, it looks like the neighbors are, the people next door have cattle, too. There were all their cattle pens on both sides. So I don't know if that was part of their property. I think on the report that you gave us earlier, that red line was shifted over where the, that, if you put it back up on their aerial view of the property. I think on our report, I think that house next to it on the east side was in the red. And I don't know if that's part of the property. Is that pretty correct on your property line right there? Or is that house to the east?
To the east is a neighborhood ours.
Okay, so that's pretty much your property right there?
Exactly, that's that part of the, yes.
Okay. But, yeah, I didn't, I didn't smell anything until I got to the back. It seemed pretty uncluttered. And I walked, the big roof is some more pens in there where they have livestock and pigs and stuff like that. The facility itself is a?
It's in that?
In the back end of the?
Small back corner, yeah.
Yeah, in the very back end. And just for the record, and then I also parked across the street. And I really couldn't smell too much either, but there was a light breeze blowing towards the east. So that could have been the reason for that, too. So, but I just put it on the record that I was there and I looked at it. But that's pretty much all I want, need to say about that, though. Thank you.
All the questions been asked. Just to confirm, so now they're going into a CUP with the city that we can review every year, correctly? I mean, it'll follow our standard CUP reviews?
There's no requirement for annual review in what we presented to you. If you'd like to add that, we can certainly do that. You may want to just say, you know, annual or, you know, as needed or until deemed not necessary?
I'm just, I don't see any necessity for that. I'm just wondering because they're now from county to us, and we have our regulations. I'm just wondering about that.
We can always send someone out there to look at things. Our code enforcement, in this case, would basically operate on a complaint basis. And we checked with code enforcement. They have not received any complaints about the operation, so.
Okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion to approve item 6.1, project number PLN 18-20035.
I move that we approve the corona cattle conditional use permit amendment.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston?
No.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes 4 to 1.
Moving on to item 6.2, project number PLN 18-20042 for a multi-tenant retail building at Goodman Commerce Center. And is there a presentation?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chair. Counting Costco, this would now be the fourth retail building, actually counting in and out, be the fifth retail building in the Goodman Commerce Center. The project planner, Kanika Kit, is here tonight. And once again, I'll hand it over to her for the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner. The application is a request for approval of a major development review to build a multi-tenant building of approximately 600 square feet at the Goodman Commerce Center. The project site is shown in the star on this screen here. The area outlined in red is considered planning area four. In planning area four, they are allowed a variety of uses from retail to business park to light industrial. And Daphne is proposing to use this space for retail. Here's a closer view of the site plan. To the west is Hamner Avenue. Hamner Avenue. And then to the east is Quick Quack. That was purely approved by the planning commission at the previous meeting. And here's a site plan showing the multi-tenant building with the associate site improvement of parking and landscaping and pedestrian access. So here are the architectural elevation for the building. Daphne Architect has done a pretty good job on making this building looks very attractive and meet the design standard in the Goodman Commerce Center and also be compatible and consistent with other retail buildings that have been approved by the commission. The two elevations you're seeing here are the south elevation, which is the storefront. Here, Daphne is proposing all glass window along the storefront and using a variety of building material of metal canopy and metal siding above the canopy and also fabric awning to provide variation in the facade. The north elevation is a rear elevation. For now, the north of this building is vacant. We have not seen the future development for the north area. So this north elevation will probably be visible along Hamner until the future building to the north get developed. But on the rear elevation, Daphne has also provided good building articulation and using projecting canopies to provide articulation of the building. And also, you'll see in the next few slides, is that Daphne is proposing some sort of canopy above the service door to provide more break on the white space behind the building here and green screen. Here's the west and east elevation. The west elevation will be facing Hamner. Prior to this coming to the commission, staff had discussion with the applicant about adding some more glass to the west elevation. A discussion with the applicant and considering that this building is going to be set about 85 feet from Hamner Avenue, and there will be landscape and parking, staff agree with Daphne to present this to the commission as proposed because this elevation will mainly be covered by landscape and car. The east elevation is the elevation that will be facing Quick Quack. So that will be visible to the main drive aisle for the center. Here's a rendering showing how the building will look like. You'll see there are some outdoor seating, which I'll talk some more in later in this presentation. And here's perspective drawing showing how this building will look like from Hamner. Again, there's the west elevation. If the commission feel that, the commission would like to see glass on the building or some other enhancement, the commission may request that. Daphne is here this evening to talk about that. And here is the north and west elevation, also in our perspective from Hamner. In this elevation, you'll see that the building will be, will have cars parked directly in front of that west elevation. And here is the view of the building from the main drive aisle of the shopping center where Quick Quack will be to the other side of the drive aisle. So here's outdoor seating area. Daphne is proposing to use a front area in front of the building for outdoor seating. And Daphne will be providing the outdoor seating amenities. One of the things that staff would like to point out is the round seat wall planter that's called out on the site plan here. That one will be a nice amenity for the plaza area, and it will be permanent. Staff also included a condition to require the apartment to put in the tables and chairs that you see here or something similar prior to certification of occupancy. This way, we know that there will be some sort of outdoor amenities out there when the building is built. Now I'll talk a little bit about access and circulation. What you see on the screen here at the yellow arrows are the access point that you can access the shopping center off Hamner. The purple line there is pedestrian access that's proposed. I'm sorry, it's kind of off a bit, but Daphne is proposing to provide pedestrian access from the storefront to Hamner. A condition is included to require Daphne to provide pedestrian connection to adjacent retail to the north and the south. Since the release of the staff report, Daphne has been working with the engineer to install a pedestrian walkway along the east side of the building. And Daphne did email the plan to the staff this evening, and staff did see that was incorporate. So just so that the commission know, there will be additional pedestrian access along the east side of the building that will provide connection to the north retail area. This project was very evaluated in the EIR for the Goodman Commerce Center, so no additional environmental review was needed for this. With that, staff recommend approval of the project subject to the conditions of approval. If the planning disagree with staff recommendation, the planning may approve the project with additional changes or condition, continue the public hearing, and direct the apartment to make revision or deny the project. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Kanika. And now we'll open a public hearing. So any speakers in regards to this agenda item?
No, we have not received any requests for this item.
And applicant, please. Did you have any questions or comments for us?
In regards to the east and west elevation, we can certainly look?
In regards to the uh east and west elevation, um, we can certainly look into adding some of the windows. But I just want to be mindful of the sun rising on the east portion of the building and setting on the west portion of the building, which is why it was probably not included. Uh, we can look at possibly adding some spandrel glazing. And uh, we can certainly check with our architect if that's a concern.
Thank you. And then moving on, I'll close public hearing and begin commission discussion. Um, Commissioner Hovey, do you have any questions?
I do have some questions on this. My biggest concern is the parking as a shopper. Um, I'm counting thirty-four with five potential businesses, say two or three employees for each business. I'm just concerned about the parking. I did visit the site but there's not really much to see there. Um, because the whole section is not developed, so um that would be my biggest concern is uh the parking to the uh building because that the parking lot seemed to be the biggest hiccup in all of Eastvale.
Commissioner Hoover may answer that question. So the project at six thousand square feet is required to provide thirty-two parking spaces. And Daphne is proposing to do thirty-five, I mean, sorry, thirty-three spaces. Sorry, did my math wrong.
Right. I'm sure that it's what's required. I'm just voicing my concern as a shopper who drives a very large car that um I'm just concerned at the number of spots available for five um locations. Even just uh being at one of the other sites here in Eastvale that just opened, uh trying to get closed parking, I can see that there are other spots uh south of the Quick Quack, but to walk I'm just convenience, I'm looking at convenience. So I'm sure it's what's required. I'm just voicing my concern about the number of spots available to the site. Do we know what type of businesses are gonna be in there? I see that there's a little bit of a food court there, so I'm assuming that there's going to be some sort of cafe or something there, but we we don't know yet.
Sure, we do. How are you? I'm Mike Kent from Goodman as well. Um, we actually have three um service uses in this particular case and no food. So UPS store is actually looking at it and then a uh sports clip and then a nail and beauty salon will be the third. And to address your concern, um, one of the things with a major development that you do through management is require employees to park in the major parking field, which will be the anchors uh outside that. So you designate areas that are kind of dead zones for all employees in the entire center to to do that. And when it gets towards the holidays and busy times of the season, you you actually enforce it. And uh, we have rules and regs in our leases that address that with all of them, because the last thing you want is employees parking and utilizing spaces for customers. So we do and have continued and will manage that uh to free and open up access for the the stalls to the customers. So hopefully that addresses some of your concerns, because I agree with you. It's you want to, it's convenience. It's all about convenience and uh so we'll be administering that. And we've already included it in. We've uh identified a parking field for the center as a whole, which will be outside the anchors. That we're improving part of it uh as a part of the in and out uh improvement, so.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay. No rush.
I think I'm okay right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, I have some questions. Um, so what first one is, what's the development north of the proposed project?
The parcel just?
Yeah.
Uh, there is a proposed restaurant north of it, which will have a higher parking count to it. So uh, we're in negotiations with that one. It's it's not quite solidified yet.
Just just wondering why we don't have access to the north and we just blocked it off.
Well, those parcels will probably be a ground lease, so that the uh customers will probably do their own improvements in that particular case. So they'll be improving the the entire site, including their buildings.
No, I'm I'm talking about the access to this to to the uh retail center. So we have a trash enclosure there on the north side. But we don't have access. Uh, we only have one access point.
Oh, in and out of there?
Yeah. Is there a particular reason as to why?
Uh, again, it'll be a restaurant that'll probably more than likely uh have control over their own pad and they'll they'll not want people to drive through it usually. I mean, that's, you try to identify that. It's like in and out. There'll be access to shared. But you typically don't have a thoroughfare through them.
Yeah, I'm I'm just concerned that, you know, having having basically colossals in in retail centers. It creates a dead zone usually, so that I I am quite concerned about that. Um, and uh, another question I have is um, it's I'm glad to see that you have addressed some of the pedestrian access issues to the east of the project. Um, but I'm, so I've shared this concern with Eric as well uh last week uh over the weekend about um Eastvale Marketplace and um some of the issues they're having with pedestrian safety uh in in that place. So this being a bigger development, I'm sure the cars will be uh will will have higher speeds and so forth and traveling at a higher speed. So I am a bit concerned, just as Commissioner Hovey brought up, um, about pedestrian safety. If they were to park outside of that retail center and to walk over, um, what are some of the pedestrian elements, safety elements that are that that you guys are proposing? So I I'm not just concerned about the pedestrian access for the retail center, but overall pedestrian safety um uh of the whole development.
From access from the street?
From not not just Hamner, but within various buildings in the development.
So there is walkways between all the all the different uh buildings?
Right.
Part of that's a part of the master plan and uh has been developed, so that there are walkways from going to the uh buildings that we're under construction with, to the anchors and all that. So part of that is in the overall design. The pedestrian pathways that we're talking about will also address that. There'll be sidewalks uh on this side, particularly on the north side of it.
Yeah, I I just want to make sure that those are uh visible markings, um, visible pavement markings.
Yeah, and they'll be offside and then they'll of course be crosswalks and
Right.
with the uh the truncated domes and things of that nature, of course.
Cause I think a lot a lot of the issues that we're seeing over at the Eastvale Marketplace is because there's no pavement markings. So drivers are driving through and you see all these customers going in and out and um having uh conflict, creating conflicts down there, so.
Sure, we'd be happy to address that as an overall site. Uh, that's easy to accomplish.
Okay.
And we agree with you. We're we're as concerned for the customers as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Charleston?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. One, uh, he kind of took that one away from me. I was concerned about not having only one way in and one way out too. It's it's always nice when there's not very many cars there. But when it's really busy, if you pull in and you're looking for that spot in the back, now how do you get back out? You have to back out if the parking lot is full. And that's not good. So that that concerned me uh pretty heavily. That there should be a way to get out of there. If you go, oh, it's full, I'll park over here. But if you go all the way to the back hoping there's a spot there, you're gonna be in trouble. You're 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 gonna struggle getting out. And if you're loaded with a whole bunch of kids and you can't see behind you very well, you know, I don't think it's uh, I don't think that's very good. Uh, my next question I would be more addressing staff is, you know, every time we have a project that comes forward, we put a lot of emphasis on the back walls, the side walls where where people don't necessarily see it. And I'm a little bit uh concerned when we say, well, it's gonna be covered by cars. A car is five foot tall. The building is not eight feet tall, so we're we're only gonna see three more feet of the building. The car is gonna do very little to the view of that building except for as you walk walk in. So I I'm not saying we necessarily need to have windows there, because we do need to be, you know, think about sustainability, keeping the building cooler and not hurting you guys. But we also need to keep in mind, how do we want it to look if we don't build for another year? You know, and I know building is going quickly now, but these projects don't just jump right out. But really, I'm concerned with how the back looks. And if if we don't want to put windows there, we've done it to banks where banks won't allow windows because of security, where they put a facade up that looks like a window. Something to make the building look a little bit more finished. So I would recommend to staff that we try to at least, if they're willing to put a window in, but they don't want to put a window in because of heat and cooling, uh you know, I'm okay with that. But we should still do some decoration there. You know, we beat Miguel's up pretty strongly. And they were gonna put artwork in the back. And we said, yeah, but the artwork is way up in the air. What about the fourteen-foot and lower level? So I think we need to hold Goodman at the same standard. They've they've built a heck of a project here for us, but I don't think we need to lighten up at this point. Thank you.
Vice Chair Blair?
I agree with Commissioner Charleston. Um, especially on the uh west elevation that's facing Hamner. Uh, according to the general plan, that's required that it looks like the front. It should be uh during sixty-degree um elevation all the way around, it should look the same. Uh, I know the back's kind of hard, because that's access doors in and out, but that west-facing side needs to look better. Uh, if you don't want to put real windows in there, like Commissioner said, uh, just put leave the concrete there, if that's what that is, and put a fake window over it or something, just to make it look like it's the front of the building, not the back or the side of the building. So we, it needs to keep its integrity. Other than that, uh, I agree with uh, if we want somewhere we could find a another access or um egress or or what, so that uh there could be some kind of through traffic, as if uh, they're right, if you get drive in there and it's full, there's no way, especially if you've got some big giant four-wheel-drive truck or R V or something, they're not gonna be able to turn, they're gonna have to back out with ten cars behind them or something. That's gonna be hard to do. And and you're talking like, maybe most of the time it's not gonna be the case, but on the holidays or or uh you know, especially Christmas shopping or something, that could be a a real problem. So um, I don't know what you can do with that, though, uh unless you move that uh trash enclosure somewhere else, but uh I I don't know. I think if we could think about it, you know, trying to fi- figure some way to get them in and out, somebody that's gonna drive through. I don't know.
Can I bring up one thought from a retailer standpoint?
Sure.
The only thing is with a planned restaurant next door, the overflow from that restaurant would inhibit these businesses from operating on a so part of the the intention of this, I'm sure, is to keep the clientele specific to the building. Um, so if you put a restaurant next door, even even with higher parking counts and to code and all that, there are seasons and peaks times where these folks will be doing business, where that overflow, it's an automatic drive-through. First available, I'm gonna take it over here. Even if we restricted parking and said these were for this building only, it never happens. The human nature is that you're gonna park wherever you see and take your chances on being towed. So part of, I think, the design and intention was to make this exclusive for these customers and to have it intentionally for them, knowing that they're surrounded by a restaurant on both sides, actually. There'll be one across the way. So your frontage is always, you know, you're hiring better uses. Uh, we designed this building intentionally to be a service-oriented one, uh, keeping the food juices in the two corner buildings that we're building on Hamner and Cantu. So we're we're keeping that as kind of the uh the flow where most of the food and timing issues will take place. We're here, there, all day, every day, appointments, people dropping off packages at UPS. We directed them intentionally down here, so part of that design. And I think the flow through from our standpoint was intentional, so just a thought. Uh, doesn't, I don't know if it remedies uh your concerns about it, but it uh is definitely part of the concern from a landlord perspective, management perspective.
But we don't want to just look at what the tenant is going to be now, because that tenant might not be there in a couple of years. We might have other types of tenants.
Sure.
Other types of uses there, because there are no restrictions on where a food service tenant can be.
Sure.
And so um, that's the minimum amount of parking required for that?
No, I just I checked with Kanika and there there are two spaces over.
Two spaces over.
So one thing, i- if I may, Mr. Chair, the the two spaces in here, they're gonna have a problem getting out, are really the last two on the the very north end of that parking lot. The next two spaces down, they've got room to back up and then go straight back out again. It's the only those last two spaces. And only when the whole parking lot is full, right? So if all those cars are parked, those last two most northern spaces are gonna have a hard time making that three-point turn. So if there are two spaces over and if we want to avoid that issue, you could simply revise the plan to remove those two spaces. So that you have more of a hammerhead at the end there. So now you're down to the second row of parking on that northern parking area. They can make an easy three-point turn back up and then pull straight out.
Put uh no parking or stripes on those?
Just turn that into landscaping. So the, and so we can't point at the screen anymore with the pointer.
Eric, um, our engineer here just drafted a plan that will eliminate just one parking in that corner. So the recommendation is to put the trash enclosure, the back of the trash enclosure to be to the west of that building and remove one parking and widen that landscape area to create a turnaround. A hammerhead.
So out of out of curiosity, has staff or applicant looked at um flipping uh the building and kind of re- relocating it so that the parking space on the east side? Then we'll have two access points.
We did not look at that, no.
That might be a good idea. Move it over to the west, towards Hamner and then the parking on the east side of the building there where and then you could have a e- extra lane to come out and then you could come back around again.
And they call it hammerhead parking, so you can make a three-point like Eric mentioned, three-point park if they find the whole thing is full. But you have to stripe the last parking lot for no parking.
Well, I'll I'll address, I mean, if you move the building towards the on the entrance.
Can you approach, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you move the building towards the the entrance there, the only thing is you now have your storefronts with no access to it. Your storefronts will be on the parking lot on the backside of the building, so your main focus and entrance will be on the backside of the building.
No, I I no, I meant.
Are you saying moving it?
No, building flip it to, yeah, to towards Hamner.
Oh, you mean turning it this way?
Yeah.
Parallel to Hamner.
Right.
Um. Well, parallel or whatever on that side, right?
Uh, whatever, yeah.
Just on that side.
Right. Just towards the hammer.
Just flipping it this way, long ways.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking just moving it straight across over to the other side.
But we have a setback, I believe. I think, is there a setback there?
Your setback is fifteen feet, the same for parking in a building. So it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there's some great ideas floating around here. Uh, we hadn't really considered totally flipping the site. Uh, so there's that to look at. There are some, I think, creative ways about addressing that issue if we don't flip the building, about just addressing the parking up there. Uh, if I could suggest, maybe we continue this to the next meeting. We can sketch up some stuff with Goodman. Bring you back a couple of way, either dealing with this site plan and seeing how that works or coming up with a different site plan. The building, I I think that the hard work on the building is done. The building just needs to move and add some glazing, I think is the other comment we heard here. But if we can maybe work those things out, bring you back some sketches and and then let the commission make a decision.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. My, my, I, I would agree with my fellow commissioners. My two concerns are the parking access, because it's only one way. That really doesn't work. I've seen it many times. The second is the pedestrian safety. At both of the marketplaces, I, I'm, I'm playing Frogger every time I'm trying to get from Bonds to maybe just across the way, because there's no real walkways in the entire Plaza. And so, those are our two main concerns here, so maybe we can work on that and at the next meeting. So, is there a motion to table this meeting to the next planning commission meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue it till the next meeting. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carlson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Vice Chair O'Blair?
Aye.
Chair Fink?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Moving on to Gen Item 7.1, Truck Route Ordinance. Craig's gonna have a presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have Craig Bradshaw from Public Works to present that item. Thank you.
Now is it on? All right. Truck Route Ordinance, this actually came to the planning commission about 18 months ago. And we looked at the actual ordinance and we adjusted the actual truck routes, and it's a little bit small. But this, just to give you a little bit of history, what's happened since then, since there's been some delay. When we went, when we went to the Public Safety Commission, there was a request to look at the oversized trucks. And oversized truck, they call them STAA trucks, and they refer to Terminal Truck Routes or Terminal Trucks. Those trucks are, are vehicles that are 65 feet or longer, and they're considered oversized trucks, and they have to be on what's called a Terminal Truck Route or STAA Truck Route. Lot of the trucks on the road now and at Amazon are these oversized trucks. Any truck that has a trailer that has a 53 on it for 53 feet, they're over length. Or a, a semi truck that has a sleeper cab, they're oversized also. It has taken us almost 18 months to go through the process with Caltrans to designate a Terminal Truck Route for Amazon, since we go in their parking lot and we see about two-thirds of the truck are these oversized trucks. We want them to be able to come into the city legally and give them a very specific route. That very specific route, which we spell out in the ordinance, is using Cantu Galliano down to Goodman, making a left on Goodman, and then going down to Hamner Avenue, making a right on Hamner Avenue, I don't know if this, if you can see this, going right on Hamner Avenue, and then making another right on Cantu Galliano and getting back on the freeway. Caltrans had to work through the geometry at Cantu Galliano, and there was, I think there was an exception that was required, and it took quite a process that we went through to get a, a Terminal Truck Route approved for that small little loop. That way it allows the Amazon trucks, those oversized trucks, to get off the freeway, go to Amazon, take Goodman, go right back around to Hamner, up Cantu Galliano, and get right back on the freeway. And that, that's what the delay has been. And truck routes, the city currently does not have truck routes. That's the purpose of the truck, truck route study, and we have to apologize, it's been delayed for so long trying to include this Terminal Truck Route portion. The study itself is summarized in that picture right there. Those are the truck routes, with exception of the Terminal Truck Routes, all the rest of truck routes in the city are shown on this plan. Basically, the study looked at where trucks were currently traveling, looked at connectivity between other cities as far as truck routes go, and it took counts and turning movements. And this is what we came up with, and it makes, it's perfectly logical. I think if you look at, the use of Hamner Avenue through the city would be designated as a truck route. Limonite off of the I-15 is, is a truck route. Archibald is a truck route, I believe Archibald turns into River Road when it goes into Norco. And then there's that little piece of River Road at the very south end, and then Helman is a truck route. And we have a, a piece of Schleishman as a truck route from the Chino City Limit to Archibald. And the dash line shows future truck routes, the future Limonite connection, which will be eventually built when properties are developed, and there's a bridge across the Cookamunga Channel, and then there's a little piece that's potentially future with the extension of Schleishman connecting to the I-15, and that's probably out there many years. But that is a summary of the truck route study a- as you see it. This is, basically, what the, what our current schedule is, we'd like the Public Safety Commission next week, city council meetings for the, the first hearing and reading October 10th and then October 24th for the second reading. Then we have to wait 60 days, and then January 1st, we could actually do truck route enforcement. And in that interim period, we will post all the signs. And Caltrans will post the sign at Cantu Galliano for Terminal Truck Route, and we'll post that loop. I talked about being a Terminal Truck Route with a, it's a blue sign with a T on it. And that's kind of a, the summary in a nutshell, it's very quick, and it's been some time since we've really delved into this issue. But what we're asking you to do is to approve the truck route study and approval of two amendments to the municipal code. This is all pretty much summarized in the truck route ordinance itself, and I'd be glad to answer questions. And that was a lot.
Thank you. Is there any questions on the commission in general for this, or Commissioner Hovey?
I do have some questions. Are we legally required to have these truck routes in our city?
Yeah, the vehicle, well, the vehicle code requires us to go through this process to have truck routes. No, we're not, but without designating truck routes, the trucks can go anywhere in our city. That's the dilemma.
So, do we, do we have to have them to this extent? I, I am not okay with this going down Archibald, going over the bridges, either one of them. I'm okay with it on Limonite, because that's what was originally discussed when the Goodman Center was approved. So, when the whole Amazon Goodman Center was approved, they said that all the trucks were gonna get off and do everything at Cantu Galliano, they weren't even allowed on Belgrave. So, you know, that was, that was okay. And we knew that Limonite was going to be, although there was a huge uproar about that as well. But Schleishman...
Yeah, part of the dilemma...
I'm not okay with that either, or, or River Road, or, or Archibald. That's why I'm wondering if we, if we have to have them. I mean, we can designate Limonite like we did before, and, and then they're allowed on Limonite, and then to Hamner, and then up to Cantu Galliano, but not Limonite over to the 15. It's just, we have so much traffic here, and they're redoing all of our streets right now, but there, there's been a lot of damage on our streets from all these years and from all the trucks from who knows, from where. And I'm concerned about the damage to our streets that are all being repaired now. And then not only that, but we've got lots of, we've got lots of kids crossing over a lot of these streets. We have one high school in our community, and these kids are required to come from all the way over here at, at Kimball and the Limonite section, all the way over to the high school. And, I mean, from our whole city, we have to go to one high school. You've got elementary kids that have to cross over Limonite, that have to cross Archibald. I'm just, I'm concerned about safety, I'm concerned about big trucks on our streets.
Yeah, let me just interject. Part of this study required us to look at what neighboring cities have for truck routes, and we had to survey the cities and to get their concurrence regarding our truck routes. Archibald is a truck route in Ontario down to our city limit right now. The same with the Kimball is a truck route up to our city limit. Half of Helman is a truck route in, on the Chino side. And we, it's the connectivity really through the cities, it's partially design, partially is a reason for the selecting of these arterials for truck routes.
Right, but Archibald can go to Limonite, and then where are these trucks going? They're going to this, the ranch, and they're going to this other development off of Archibald and Limonite. So, eventually, when this other connection piece here is done, then they can go from Limonite over to Kimball, and then back over to Hamner, and then up to Cantu Galliano. And then they can stay off of our surface streets. Is this something where we can preliminarily approve certain connections on Schleishman, but then once the Limonite one is done, then eliminate that?
Yeah, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're supposed to provide two, two access points, east-west and north-south, right? Is that, yeah, so that's, that's the dilemma that we, that we had in the past with the truck study.
Well, that's why I asked if it was legally required that we had to have these routes. I don't like them on the interior of our streets, in our neighborhoods.
Commissioner Hovey, I understand the frustration, we are also frustrated with this, but the reason we have this truck route study, even though it's required, is so you have to regulate, because right now, the trucks are everywhere. And our share of department, they have a hard time of ticketing them, because we don't have any truck route, designated truck routes. So, we also understand that under federal law, all the highways that we have in the city, to be able to get some grants for transportation projects are, we cannot prohibit trucks going through our cities. The best we can do is do some minimal truck routes. And in this case here, we have Norco and Corona in the south, and we have Ontario, they're both using Archibald. And on Helman, for example, Chino is Miramonte's on, on Chino's side, this stuff is everywhere there. So, we try to regulate them without to say, hey, don't go anywhere else, go here. And the skirt of the city, I understand Archibald is cutting across to the city, I understand that completely, Schleishman as well. But as much as we want to have these trucks going anywhere else but, but Eastvale, by, by federal code, by federal law, we, we are required to, when we want to receive funding, so we have to have all this, let this truck go through our cities. We try the best we can, like, for example, Schleishman, we don't let Schleishman go through because of the schools and stuff between, between Archibald and Hamner. We stop Schleishman at Archibald, and then you have to go only north and south, all this stuff coming from Chino. And this is not even finished right now, because I understand that in the future, Helman is going through, all the 60 freeway through Vineyard, and Sumner Avenue is going to 60 freeway through Haven. That's when Ontario is developed. We, at a time, we may want to strong, strongly oppose that, because all those gonna go through the city. So, I understand the frustration, and then it's also what we have been feeling all along, and what is the best time and the best route for these trucks. I hope that gives a little consolation.
So, what is the minimum that we have to provide?
Yeah, we, we had that discussion with a consultant, and we really believe that this is the minimum we can get away with, because it provides connectivity to the neighboring cities, and we've gotta be reasonable with the truckers, or we're gonna run into problems.
Can, can we eliminate Archibald between River Road and Schleishman?
Between River Road and Schleishman?
And then just have Schleishman and Archibald there until Limonite is connected?
So, then we are pushing the trucks over to...
Helman.
Over to Helman.
Which is where we have a blue line right now anyways. So, if they were coming up River Road, they would just turn left on River Road and then ride on Helman and go up to the range.
We, we, we can look into it, it'll require the study to be revised, and we'll have to probably re-survey the cities, although it still provides connectivity. But we'll have to, we've gone, we've gone through the trucking, there's a trucking group we've gone through and vetted this through originally also, we'll have to go through them.
When is Limonite scheduled to go through? Is that, are we waiting for that?
Years.
The property?
That, that's unknown at this time.
Yeah, okay.
Depends on development and bridge being built.
We have about, it, it's about a $5 million bridge, and we have about...
I think it's 3.7.
3.7 of that $5 million, so we're, we're pretty close. And we have a couple of development projects that are getting ready to come in for pre-application or in pre-application, that when they come in, they'll need to be building the bridge, and we'll work with reimbursement to get those, the bridge built, so.
I beli- I believe before we incorporated, that was the Burcher project that was going in there, the Burcher Goodman?
Yes.
And we fought that, and they did not develop there because of the trucking, because of the tracks, because of, but this was before we incorporated, which is, but it was because of trucks coming into our communities. That's all I have.
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Carlson?
Well, I love your passion, Commissioner Hovey, and the problem with trucks is, it's just a part of our life. It's logistics is what moves our goods around everywhere.
I understand that.
It's not simple, and the problem that most people don't understand is that a truck can go anywhere in our city, even when this is done, if it's appointed destination for delivery. So, if we have businesses that could be at Schleishman and Sumner, which is commercial property, and if a semi has to deliver to them, they're gonna be on our streets where the kids are walking to school. And we can't really stop that. If it's a delivery, they're supposed to deliver and then get back on the truck route. So, my issue, even when we do one of these, is enforcement. We can have so many rules and so many things we need to be accountable for, but we need to have a plan that we can actually enforce. And that's, I mean, this isn't ideal, but it's not bad, as far as when I look at a trucking plan for the city, I think it's, I think you guys did a pretty good job, because we do have federal and state guidelines we have to follow. But I still will just say that, you know, once we get it, whatever we decide is gonna be the best thing, if this ends up being it, we still have to enforce it, because it is a very large complaint from our residents. But those residents don't understand that the trucks have to come in and deliver goods. And as the businesses keep growing, which we keep promoting, they have to have products. So, it's just gonna be a thing that we're gonna have to educate people on and make sure they understand, we have a certain area the trucks can be. We ran into this where on 68th Street by the park, we had semis driving down the residential street and parking there for a day or two at a time. Once we made that known to the city, our law enforcement did a great job policing that and letting them know, you can't be there. But it took a few months to get that straightened out, because it's not like that truck was parking there every day. It would be every other week. So, it's, this, even once we start enforcing it, it's not gonna happen immediately, so I really don't have anything other than a comment that, I know this is tough for us, but we have to move forward.
Commissioner Carlson, if I might, we, we will be sharing this truck route, and we have already shared this truck route with the Eastvale Police Department, and we have a, a new motor officer that will be starting at, at the quarter one of 2019, and, and so we will have two motor officers and another traffic unit that we will be working on, on these, on these issues. And so, if anybody in the community has any awareness of trucks that are cutting through our community and not delivering to our community, then we can take appropriate action for enforcement, and we will work on those things. So, that, I will bring that attention to the captain lieutenant of our Eastvale Police Department, so that they can let all their officers know that we want to keep an eye on our semi trucks and making sure they're serving our businesses and not cutting through our community.
Perfect, thank you.
Vice Chair O'Blair?
And I, I believe the purpose of this truck route is to control the trucks traveling through our city, because like Commissioner Carlson touched on, if they have a destination in the city, they're gonna, they're, we have to allow them to drive on the streets and to... and to their destination. So that's not the purpose of this. The purpose is for the trucks that are going through our community to make sure that they stay on a specific route. My concern is why didn't we include Schleisman as a future truck route? Because what we're doing here, it looks like we're funneling all the east-west traffic up to Limonite and funneling them all on to Limonite if they want to connect on to the 15 to go south.
The schools.
Well, uh, what school? There's only one school that I know that's on.
But the, the three schools are all, are, are right there at Schleisman and then Scholar.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not Schleisman. That's, that's Scholar Way.
There are thousands of kids that will walk right there. They all walk to Harada. If you drive that path.
I, I, I walk that path all the time and their parents pick them up. That's why we have so much traffic there. There's hardly any students that walk there by themselves unless they're high school students.
There are thousands of kids there. I would not recommend Schleisman at all, not at all.
It, if, we need a, a truck route to get them through the city quickly and safely. Uh, and that's if they, if we, if future truck routed, I'm talking about, if we have the connection there at, uh, Schleisman onto the 15, the trucks are going to pass that way anyways. So, and if we widen those streets, um, I don't see, because we're funneling everything onto Limonite. If they want to go to the 15, then Limonite's going to be jam-packed with trucks all the time. And, uh, Chino is building warehouses and they have a truck route Pine that's going on to, into our city and Kimball is going to be going on to our city. Especially if, uh, Limonite, um, a connection is made. And that's going to, that's going to put a lot of truck traffic on Limonite. And we only have one east-west route going through our city. So I think that's a big strain, especially right there where if we have the, uh, the, um, development on, uh, Hamner and Schleisman, the, um, I can't remember the name of that project that's going to start. What's it?
Los.
Is it Los?
No, the, uh.
The one in that triangle-shaped corner?
No, no, the big plot, I can't think of it right now. What? No, 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 on, on Limonite and Hamner. Leo property.
Oh, 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 that one, okay.
Wow, that's this little one I know.
Yeah, I know. I just, duh, it was, it was gone. The Leo property that, if we have, we're going to have trucks going uh, right in front of that project or in, in that development. And, uh, there's going to be enough trucks going into that place as it is, let alone going through it because that's going to be the only east-west corridor through our city is, right there at Limonite. So I, I think we should seriously think about, and if we need to, we can mitigate the problem by having some kind of crossing guards or extra, uh, sensitive crossing systems to cross for pedestrians across those streets. But, uh, I, we're just looking for trouble just to funnel them all onto Limonite. With those retail developments going up right there in that area. But other than that, I think everything looks good, except I'm just curious why that Schleisman is not a future truck route. If everything's built out the way it's supposed to be, if not the way it is now, that, there's no way it can be a truck route. Not the way it is now, but in the future, if it's built out and we have the connection to the 15, I think that seriously needs to be considered as a truck route. In my opinion. Thank you.
I guess it's, do you have something?
No.
No?
Um, well, I, I think what Commissioner Lee was also on the committee for this with me.
Yeah. Well, you were on the committee too?
Yeah, and reviewing this. And there, there was a lot of discussion and I know we discussed, uh, Bella Grave, everything else. Um, and we had a lot of sort of chicken scratches, um. My concern mostly is sort of what Brian mentioned, um. Archibald between Schleisman and River Road, um, doesn't really necessarily need to be a, a, a truck access route. Because we can utilize the Helman route because Chino already has it going north and south, one way. And, you know, we, we, we have it on ours. And so that, it doesn't really benefit any businesses going through Archibald in that, in that area. Because on the north, we have a lot of the, the, you know, the business buildings, Amazons there. We have the Merge coming in and other manufacturer buildings there. So those trucks will service it. But, I mean, is, is it really another process to, to take that section out as Brian mentioned, Craig? Craig? Is it, i- i- how long will it take to do another study if we were to take the truck route off between, on Archibald between Schleisman and River Road?
Oh, it's probably four to six months, uh, to do the study, contact the cities. We really need to notify people along those routes also. I don't think, uh, they've envisioned. You've got, uh, residential development along several segments there that, uh, we'd be, be shifting trucks over to that segment. So we're probably four to six months.
I mean, these concerns will be shared by the Public Safety Commission and then also City Council if so they, if they do have concerns. So they'll have.
We, we wouldn't, Craig, we wouldn't be shifting because we already have Helman as a truck route.
We, we have Helman as a truck route, but you'd be having more trucks go past residential properties that we're, we're not expecting. We'd have to do some notification to let people know what the truck route, new truck route's going to be.
There's less residential on Helman compared to Archibald.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can look at it. Well, I, I don't, I don't know that it's going to take four or six months to go down and do it again, but we can look at it.
Because I understand all the concerns that the commissioners mentioned. I mean, Limonite, anything going through the city i- i- is horrible, but Limonite, I believe, is slightly better than Schleisman given the, the, the width of the road and what it can take. And so I'm okay with that. It's just, I don't see it very necessary in that Archibald section like Brian mentioned.
Yeah, Ar- Archibald's classified as an arterial, uh, it's designed as a six-lane road. Uh, Helman, I think ultimately, is it four-lane ultimately? Uh, we have sections that are single, uh, there are just two lanes, uh, sections of Helman. Um, looking at capacity wise, uh, Archibald is really more equipped for handling heavier volumes.
Well, my comparison was for, between Limonite going east and west and Schleisman going east and west. My, my train, my perspective in taking out Archibald section is because there's a lot more residents and, and regular traffic there, um, you know, for commuters than Helman. And on the other side of Helman, it's, it's undeveloped. There's a bunch of just, I forgot what they do there, but i- it's, there, there's nobody living on the other side of Helman, on the east side. So it's, it's going to at least, um, not have that much of impact on, on the residents and traffic. So. That's my.
And Helman is already a truck route now, Chino's side especially.
Yeah.
Miramontes and stuff. So the only thing that, um, if we eliminate Archibald, um, we may want to consider eliminating, um, Schleisman as well between, between, um, um, Helman and Archibald. Um, and deterring everything to River Road and Helman. The only challenge we have is all the turn, the geometric on River Road and, and River Road there in the corner. And also River Road and Helman. Uh, those turns are quite tight right now. And there is a very small bridge over Cucamonga Creek Channel on Helman. And they checked that the bridge is only 30 feet wide and, 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 um, I know we're going to have Rondo there. Whenever we go, we have schools. We're going to have Rondo School along, along Helman and Waters. So that's going to be, um, um, uh, the challenge. And, and of course, um, Chino already identified Helman as a truck route, so there is no issue. Um, uh, we have to go back to the trucking association, industry associations and go back to other cities as well, um, um, uh, Corona in the south and, uh, Ontario, which I don't think they care because they still have a, uh, um, so I, I think, uh, we can certainly, um, talk to our consultant again and look into this and see if there is an option.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's, we're, we're, we're going to have, you know, truckers or, or companies, they're, they're, they're going to need to follow our rules, but, uh, you know, eventually they'll get there once we enforce it. So I'm just thinking that this is probably going to be the least impact um, out of everything else considered. Um, Commissioner Lee?
I, I just have, uh, quick concern. Uh, so I, I was on the committee as well, so, you know, I, I do share Commissioner Hovey's concerns. We've, I think we've addressed, uh, we've put that all out there during the committee meeting. Um, so all of those options were, um, kind of considered and, and we went back and forth on those things. Um, my only concern I have is if we do open that up, um, are we going to get some backlash from the trucking industry? Um, because we had to make some concessions on, on these things. And we're trying to get away with the minimal. And now we're adding on top of that, uh, minimal, some more concessions from, uh, asking concessions from the trucking industry. So if we actually get rid of those two routes on the short route on Schleisman and, and Archibald and, and that north-south, that means we basically have like anything internally within our, in our, in our city of anything, um, any truck, truck routes. It's basically all outskirts of our city. So my only thing is, my only concern is that I know staff has negotiated that uh, with the trucking industry and then I know they're, they, yeah, they've, I'm sure they have, have voiced their concerns over this. I just don't want to open it up for them to start commenting on it and, and, you know, and we end up actually losing more out of that, um, renegotiation. So that, that's the only concern I have.
Cool, yeah. I'm, I, I, I thought about what, um, uh, Joe mentioned about Schleisman. Um, the reason why I left Schleisman in is because they do need another access point. So if they're coming up Archibald and they go west on River and then north on Helman, at least they have Schleisman to sort of get back into the city. And that, that corner is mostly commercial buildings. Right, uh, the corner of Schleisman and Archibald, I mean, a little bit north of there, that's where they're, you know, and then the future, you know, projects in that area. So, I mean, as far as a bridge, Schleisman has a bridge as well. Um, so it's probably the, 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 the same, you know, size as the Cucamonga one that you mentioned. So I, I, I'm only suggesting that we eliminate the truck route on Archibald between Schleisman and River Road if possible.
Mr. Chair? I really don't see too much truck traffic going down, uh, south, down Archibald into River Road. Uh, if you look on the map where it leads to, it doesn't really go to. It's not like it'd be a quick access to a freeway to the 91 or anything else like that, unless they're heading for another warehouse. But other than that, and then it's a destination, so um, I don't really see too much truck traffic going north. I think most of it's going to be going, I mean, south. I didn't see it going north up to the 60. That's going to be the shortest connection to a freeway. And, uh, going north and going east to the 15, that's where they, they're going to want to get on these fre- these freeways and take off. So.
Should we, I mean, do we have at least a consensus on what we want to do going forward? If we do want them to change it?
I have, I have one question, uh, Chair. So Craig, if, I mean, and I, I really share Commissioner Lee's concerns. If we, if it's taken 18 months to get here from the last time we talked about this, you know, I'm hoping there was a lot of work that went into this and I'm assuming there is and that's kind of dangerous, but I just know there's, you know, there's a reason it takes a while. That, that's what I.
Sorry, as far as traffic studies go and counts, I was just trying to look up counts on that segment. Um, I, I know, I, I wish we'd had the consultant here tonight. That would have been helpful and he could explain to you, really, the processes gone to, uh, gone through uh, regarding preparing this report and analyzing this. I know when we were dealing with a consultant and dealing with the, the trucking industry and so forth, that's removing of that piece of Schleisman was a big deal. And we were, kind of felt like we were going as far as we could go by removing that segment in the center of the city. But we had concerns about the number of pedestrians that cross that segment, particularly at Scholar. And it, and it does narrow down through a stretch and it goes through a residential area, right through a residential area. Um, we, we felt like we really pushed it as far as we could push it when we were going through this study with a consultant and, and dealing with the different associations in neighboring cities. Now with that being said, uh, you, we, we can appreciate, you know, the struggles, you know. It'd be nice to be able to eliminate interior streets as much as possible. We, we understand that.
No, that, that's my only question is that, you know, I know a lot of work went into this. And for us to just go, well, I don't want it here and I'd like it here and you don't want it there. You know, we're not always all going to agree on it a- at any point. I, I would definitely agree that the, the area of Scholar Way and Schleisman, I would never want semis there. Not, not, no way. So I, I like this plan. And if, if I'm being told from you that there's a, you know, and people, we had commissioners on the team and we worked hard to get to this point here, then I'm good with it.
I would like to know if there is a, once the Limonite section goes through, then it is brought back and we revisit removing the Schleisman portion? I mean, is it something that can be revised where you remove the, the Schleisman and the south Archibald?
Yeah, that, that could certainly come back at that time. I mean, a lot of the dynamics.
Like this is a temporary.
Yeah, a lot of the dynamics will be changing when that, when, when Limonite goes through. Um, that Helman is being widened. There, there's a great deal of development going on. I believe that, that heads over, that's really a good route toward the 71. Uh, and that really makes a good route for trucks going between 71 and 15. Um, we're, we're kind of in the center of all these freeways. And so I, I think our concern is trucks using these routes is cut through when the freeways are so busy. And we, we have not seen that very much. I think we, we're getting perhaps some of that. I mean, Archibald lines up directly with the 60 freeway, although out south of us, uh, there's not really a good route on Archibald going through Norco. And so I don't, I don't believe that Archibald is extremely heavily used as a truck route itself. I, I think you're seeing, uh, much more on Hamner. We see more trucks on Hamner than any of the streets. We will, Limonite will have fairly heavy, heavy truck traffic because of the freeway location, entrance location and the proximity to Archibald going north to the 60. Um, it's just some of my thoughts.
If I may add, um, Commissioner Hovey, um, this is an ordinance the City Council would adopt. I, I, I don't think you should call it temporary. Just whatever we adopt now is an ordinance. Until such time that the council wishes to change that. When something changes like Limonite is extended. We can re-study this and go back before you, before the council again. The councils can, can make, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney.
That's absolutely right. I mean, it, it will be, i- i- if, if it is recommended and it goes forward and is adopted and, um, approved by the City Council, it will become ordinance. But an ordinance can always be amended. And if things change and a new truck study is done, then the, the route could be changed at a later date.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on what we would recommend going forward on maybe a change or, or the existing truck route? Anyway, huh? Commissioner Lee seems like he likes it. Commissioner Charleston?
I like it like it is. We can change it. We can always change it.
Commissioner Hovey? I, I, I personally don't want to delay it. I'm just inquiring about that section. And if it's, if it's just me, I don't want to, you know, push that issue as far as Archibald goes. Um, but if we have a consensus, we can definitely, um, approve a recommendation to, uh, to council when they, when they get this and see how they vote on it.
I'll make a motion. I, I move that we, uh, sent the City Council the, our recommendation to accept this truck route as presented.
Second?
Roll call please.
Aye.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey? No. Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Excuse me, uh, recommend, uh, recommend the two amendments. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, do we need to make another motion to?
To, to recommend, uh, the two amendments to the Eastvale Municipal Code?
I'll make a, a motion to.
I, I, I think the motion was, was pretty clear that, that you were, you were recommending the approval of the truck route or?
With the amendments.
With the amendments. I, I think the record is, is clear on that.
That is fine.
Alrighty, moving on to, uh, staff report. Anything from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, before we do that, we have one person come in and turned in a speaker slip on a non-agenda item after public comment, so we'd. on a non-agenda item after public comment, so we invite them to come up and speak at this time.
Oh, sure. I'll open up public comment.
My name is Timona and I've been in this community since oh-two. And when I came, there was hardly anything here. And so, I mean, it's grown, it's grown, but I feel like we're in the overdevelopment phase now with, especially with housing. Um, I found out that D.R. Horton, are those, those housing, are they part of the Norco Corona School District? The one right on the other side of the freeway?
Which?
They're not, they're not part of the Norco-
The sixty freeway or fifteen?
Right, and when you go over, it's on Patch Ranch, all of those houses.
No.
They're not, okay, thank God. Um, and another thing, the, the, the businesses, like, I know this, I mean, you guys are doing a great job. It's, it's easier to complain and not know the process and that's why I'm here. This is my first time coming. Um, and I was just curious as to what the process was because it's like, it just seems like, for me, I'm here by myself, but I know a lot of people who feel the same way, who just feel like it's not even worth coming. It just seems like whatever business wants to come, it's like come on, come all. I mean, we have eight pizza places in this community. I mean, there's five from Sumner to here. That's ridiculous. I'm, I mean, I'm not criticizing you guys because you guys are doing a good job, but I just feel like, first of all, when is it gonna stop? Because we have a new development going on the corner of Scholarway and Limonite. They're gonna squeeze houses in there? It's like, it's, I'm just, I'm really frustrated is why I'm here. Because we don't have anything that's really wholesome here. Everything that's come, it's, it's, it's junk. I mean, Miguel's, one point, I mean, Poke Bowl is halfway decent, but I, I guess myself and of course, again, by myself, um, we just wanna know what the process is. It just doesn't seem like there's much care and consideration. And being here, I, it's completely different. I do see that you guys do talk about it because I, that's why I sat here the whole time. Because I, again, I wanted to know. It's easy to, it's easy to complain when you don't know what's going on. So I said, instead of complaining, I'm just gonna come. But that's all, that's my concern and it is with a lot of people that live in this community. I mean, I've been here, I can't believe it's been sixteen and a half years. I mean, I've had kids, my daughter's in ninth grade, and that's another thing, the school is overcrowded. She doesn't go there to Roosevelt, but it's extremely overcrowded. And then I hear kids are coming from outside of the community that are going there. Why is that allowed? Like, I'm sorry, I don't mean to complain, but it's the, going to the town hall meeting, it's not, it's not fit there. I don't know where I'm supposed to be. That's why I'm here, so I'm just starting here. So if you guys have any feedback for me, I don't wanna come and just bark at you like you're not doing a good job because that's not true. I don't want you to feel that way, but I'm, where do I go from here to get involved? Because I, I wanna be involved.
You just can't answer her and you just make your statement and you-
Oh, so this was a waste of time?
No, 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 no.
I'll, I'll, I'll respond to you, I'll, I'll respond to you. Uh, um, they can't take action on anything you're saying here.
No, no, I know.
So, so, because it's not on the agenda.
Everybody's looking at me like, okay, when is she gonna be here?
You're perfect. We, we, we live, we wish we had more residents like you that wanted to engage. A, a, and so we need more residents engaging and, and participating in this process. Um, uh, my name is Brian Jones and I'm the interim city manager here for the city of Eastville. And we have a great team of staff and a planning commission and a city council. And, um, you know, when we incorporated, we adopted a general plan that set the, the vision for our city. And so we have a, a general plan and it, it's our gr- guiding document. Uh, the homes on Limonite and, and Scholar were approved more than ten years ago before we were even incorporated. Uh, um, and that, that developer never built those homes. Those were approved in the county before we were a city. A, a, and so, um, that, that map has been sitting there a, a, and they, and they finally are developing it, right? Uh, um, and so, um-
But they built a portion of those homes.
They, they built a portion, but they didn't-
Built them all, now they're finishing the-
They didn't build them all. Uh, um, so, um, you know, some things happen and, and they go really fast and then some things happen and they go really slow. Uh, and, um, and, and that project in that case went, it was approved a long time ago and they never, they chose not to develop it. Uh, um, that's fairly rare when they get approvals because they wanna, they wanna make money on building homes. Uh, um, a, and so in that case, it didn't happen. Um, uh, we do have a number of planning efforts and, and the best thing to do is participate in the planning commission. If you're not engaged with us on social media, uh, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, Instagram.
I don't do any of those, I'm sorry, I'm so old.
But if you have email, we have e, e, e notification, e, e-news. And if you go on our website or I can give you my business card and when, if you send me an email, I'll have my public information officer help connect you and I'll give you this in just a second. Um, but we would love for our community to always be engaged with us, uh, um, and letting us know how they are liking what's happening or not liking what's happening. Um, you know, we get a lot of, like, a lot of the construction that's going on right now. People are saying, why are we maintaining roadways? And it's becau- because we got complaints that the roadways weren't being maintained. And so then we maintain the roadways and people say, uh, but it comes with a lot of traffic control. And we say, well, we gotta have the crews out there and be, um, uh, safe while they're maintaining our roadways, right? Uh, um, and so there, there's give and take of, of everything, um, in, in our community. Uh, we have a hundred and sixty acres just west of, of where we're at right now, where, that's the dairy right there. And that's gonna be, uh, you know, what, what we refer, commonly refer to as our town center or downtown. Most cities start with a downtown or a town center and then we build the suburbs. Uh, um, i- i- and Eastville, we're doing it the exact opposite. So we're actually gonna be, build a even better downtown or downtown than others' communities, hopefully, with the, the, and that Leo Master Plan was approved and adopted by this commission and the city council last fall.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have a plan for it to be developed yet, but there's a lot of people talking about it. Uh, um, and so, um, uh, you know, we, we, we're always looking for community engagement on what is right and what is wrong. Uh, um, and then sometimes the commission and the city council, they have to really, um, sometimes they have to do what they feel is right, but might not be popular. And so what's right is not always popular and what is popular is not always right. Uh, um, just as what's easy is not always right and what's right is not always easy. A- as they were just describing on the trucking route, it took eighteen months to get, uh, where we're at here so that we can control our trucks in our, in our city. And so, um, you know, we're really, um, there's a lot of process and effort that goes into how the community is developed. I mean, uh, this commission looks at how much windows and glasses and, uh, you know, i- 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 too much stucco, not enough stucco. Uh, I've never heard him say that. Uh, um, but, um, uh, you know, um, you know, do, is there enough brick? You know, is the height and the masking of the buildings right?
I know, and that's why I decided to just come.
It, it, it's, it's a great learning opportunity. One thing that we've been thinking about a, a, as a, a city staff is creating a, a government one-on-one or a, a, a Eastville one-on-one leadership program. A, a, and, and, um, uh, I'll want to connect with you because I'd, I'd love for you to be one of the first people in the community to participate in that if we, when, when and if we develop that. Because we'd really like to be able to cre- create the future community leaders and have them be engaged in our communities a, and, and understand how our government works so that you can participate in the government because it is a democracy. Um, these people up here are appointed and volunteer, uh, to be in these positions, um, by the city council. A, and, and, and we elect our city council and they, they make some pretty tough decisions and sometimes pretty easy decisions. Today, we had a girl, Girl Scout group, Girl Scout troop fifteen-hundred in here doing a mock city council. And they got to choose what was it gonna be our, our, our puppy, puppy, uh, city puppy and our, our princess. Uh, uh, and so we went through and had them participate in that effort, uh, to, so they could learn how somebody addresses a council and not, whatnot. So we do a lot of great things i- i- in the community and, and, and sometimes, uh, we win and sometimes we learn, but we're always trying. And, and so, but we would love for you to be engaged with us a, and, 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 and we're here to serve you and our goal is to exceed your expectations every day. And so if we're not exceeding your expectations, we wanna know what your expectations are so we can alter how we're doing things. Uh, um, and I, and I, I mean that as genuine and authentic as I said it. Um, you know, we, we have a huge heart for serving the community. We have a bunch of servant leaders both up there and on the staff and, um, um, and we, uh, po- it, it's a three-legged stool. It's the city council, it's the city staff and it's the community. And we gotta, all, all three of us be, uh, propping up and a, a lot of people put the city in the middle of, of, I, I was just explaining this to my staff today. A lot of people ask the city to solve our problems, right? And I said, what if we take the city out of, uh, of being the hub of the wheel and we become a stakeholder and we put the problem in the middle and all the stakeholders are working together to solve the problem rather than focusing on the city to solve the problems, right? A, and, and, um, um, you know, we get called up from one school saying the other school is causing congestion a, a, at their school. We say, you guys work for the same school district, can we work together to solve this, right? Uh, uh, um, we, we have one neighbor call us up and say the other neighbor isn't doing this right. And we say, how do we get you guys two to talk to each other, right? Uh, um, um, we don't always have to be the middle to solve it, but we wanna help facilitate connecting people in our community so that they feel connected and they are connected. And that's a real goal of ours and, and we're gonna be working on that, um, diligently over the next, uh, months and years. And so, um, you're gonna see a lot of things we put in place for that. And so I'm gonna give you my card. It's got my cellphone and my email on it and, um, and if you send me an email, um, when you send me an email, um, and then if you also go online, Olivia Applegate is our public information officer, uh, and, and she handles all communication for the city. And so she, she makes them and me look a, as good as she can make me look. Uh, um, uh, that's a tough job. Uh, um, so, um, but she sends out an e-newsletter every Friday afternoon. She, we only work Monday through Thursday, but she works on Friday to get the newsletter out. Uh, um, and so, um, and she sends me a bill, so. Uh, um, but, um, she's, she's a rock star and, and you'll get more information than you'll ever want to know from those e-notifications that I, so I hope you, uh, click on them and read them because, um, there, there's a lot of great information and, uh, to get involved. Um, and, uh, you know, we're gonna be celebrating our eighth birthday on, on October sixth as a city. Um, at, uh, the Fall Festival and that's another great way to get involved in the community. Um, and then we're gonna have an open house here on October twenty-fourth for, at our, our council meeting, uh, because we just opened up this council chamber. We used to have a council, we used to have them over at, uh, Rosa Parks. And so we just had our first council meeting here last week, um, but it was kind of a soft opening because not everything was perfect yet. But by October twenty-fourth, we're hoping that everything will be perfect. Um, a, and, uh, um, and we're pretty excited about how we're kinda growing as a city. We're, we're, we were crawling and, and, and now we're starting to run as a city. Yeah, so, yeah, so, but, uh, um, you know, we're about eighty-five percent of the way to build out. Um, so we're, we're pretty close to build out. We only have a couple parcels left in the city to really build out. A, and what we're trying to do is really be strategic on those, that last fifteen percent to make sure that we're creating a financial, a sustainable model for us to, to serve you as residents and businesses. And so that's, that's our goal. I, is how do we make sure this next fifteen percent i- is done really well and really smart to create a great revenue a, and, 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 um, opportunity for us to serve you. Um, um, we are one of the tightest, leanest budgets of local governments in the state of California here at Eastville. So I, I can proud to say that I'll put my, my team up against any team i- in the state of California for efficiency and effectiveness, uh, uh, of what we do with the, with the amount of money that we do with. Uh, um, so we have probably one of the smallest city staffs in California, uh, but, uh, they're one of the hardest working staffs per body. So, um, we're pretty excited and, and so hopefully that helps a little bit.
Yeah, that was my next question. When are we gonna be done? And you said fifteen percent more, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so, but the thing, the thing is, is when are we gonna be done? But Ontario to the north?
Oh, no.
I, i- i-
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Can we?
Yeah.
Move on?
Yeah.
Yeah, because Tamara actually, uh, actually not Tamara, Timona? Is it? Could you stay after? I'd like to speak to you a little bit as well, um, and address your concerns. Um, Brian said it great. I mean, we, we love residences that, that come and get involved. Um, it is a little confusing with the different entities, but hopefully I can clear up some of that for you later. Um, okay, staff report?
Yeah, well, and, a- again, Ms. Kelly, thank you for making our day. It, you don't know how often it is that someone says, I'm really interested in planning. So it's a thrill to hear that once in a while. Just a few things for the commission. Uh, yesterday, Tuesday, we started the forty-five day review period for the environmental impact for the Merge. Uh, we pushed our consultant to get that done. That keeps us on schedule. The review period for that ends on November second, so assuming there's no huge issues that come up during public review, we will have a final EIR in time for the commission's meeting on November twentieth, when you consider that project. So, uh, we were very mindful of your desire to see that and done everything we can to keep on that schedule.
What project was that again?
Uh, it's the Merge. That's at the northeast corner of Limonite and Archibald, so just north of the Walmart project. And it, it's a mix of retail and light industrial. So I definitely invite you to take a look at that document and, uh, you can see the project description in there. What you see coming to you will look a little bit different than what's in the EIR, but the EIR is looking at worst-case scenario, so kind of maximum development. So, and kudos to our consultant who did both that EIR and the one for the Lewis project. I owe him several six-packs of beer to make up for the effort that he had to put in to get that done. Looking forward to our next couple of meetings, uh, in October, we're gonna have the Goodman CR eleven building come back. We have, uh, probably two other projects coming to you at that meeting, so we'll have a fairly full agenda. And then November will be the Merge project and that's to keep us on track for the council to consider that general plan amendment in December. And also in the November meeting, we'll probably have another general plan amendment, zone change project coming to you as well. Don't have the timing on that one nailed down, so I don't wanna com- commit to that. But we, we have the projects kinda stacked up for the next couple of meetings. And if you get a chance, just, uh, drive around town. Uh, as, as Ms. Kelly mentioned, there's a lot of stuff getting built right now. Uh, there are three different buildings going up in the Goodman Commerce Center right now. Uh, In-N-Out's gonna start construction in addition to the three Goodman buildings that are under construction now. Uh, Quick Quack is gonna be under construction here pretty soon with their car wash. But can anywhere you go, Eastville Marketplace, Les Schwab is almost done, Miguel's is almost done, Playa Loco i- is up and, you know, well underway. Uh, the ninety-nine cent store is probably gonna open within a month or two. They're really at the point now where they're just gonna go in and start merchandise, putting the merchandise in the store. So we're working with them, by the way, on the signs. They're overly bright and we're gonna talk with them about turning them down a notch or two. Uh, I was out there the other, well, last week and, and the lights on the inside of the signs, I think, are almost burning a hole through the plastic in the front, so we're gonna get them to turn them down.
Didn't we say something about them being smaller too? Weren't they supposed to be smaller than they originally wanted them to be?
Those are smaller than what they originally wanted to have, yes. So, they, they, they definitely comply with the sign code, but we're, we're gonna get them to turn down the sign, the lights there.
They actually have a grand opening date. They sent us an email here recently, so we, we can get that and send that out to the planning commission.
So we're working with them. Uh, I think we're gonna have the same kinda conversation with Les Schwab. We've already heard from folks on the other side of Sumner that their signs are, are pretty bright, so we're gonna talk to everybody about just turning it down a notch. Yeah, we can, we can see our signs. You don't need to see them from the moon. And that is about it. Uh, again, thank you for staying here for a few minutes after the meeting and welcome, Commissioner Hovey. Hope you enjoyed your, your first meeting.
Yes.
And as always, to you and any other commission, if you have any questions on anything between these meetings, give us a call. We're always happy to talk. We love talking about planning. We love people who love planning, so.
Can I just add something real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
On the Goodman, um, projects, is it possible to get, um, maybe a, a better map of the buildings when they're, it would've been nice to see that center and then you know how we said that there was gonna be a restaurant just north of it? Um, because there isn't any, there isn't any perspective, um, because there, I drove the site and it's just a dirt lot. The map that was in here was too small, so no detail. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we'll def- we'll get you a copy of this of the specific plan. I'll reach out to Goodman, because they produce maps that show kind of their ultimate goal. They also.
You can see how everything's laid out.
Yeah, and they also produced a video that they launched about a month ago.
It's on our social media.
On our social media page. It's a, you know, three D flyover that shows at least their plans for the entire thing built out. So driving through it, flying over it, it's really cool. So I'll send you a link to that, too.
Thank you.
So I just looked up on the email, the ninety-nine cent store in Eastville is opening on October fourth at seven forty-five A M with the store officially opening at eight A M, so there's gonna be a ribbon cutting about seven forty-five on October fourth. If you're so inclined to show there.
They might hate me.
They're not gonna sell beer, I'm not going.
Right?
Right.
Was there any other staff reports?
No, sir.
Onto Commissioner Communications. We'll start with Commissioner Hovey.
I don't have any of my, I don't know what that is, so.
Oh, we just, whatever you have for.
Oh, I think I did, so that was all I had. Oh, thank you very much. Yes, I am glad that I'm here. And I'm excited to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Commissioner Lee?
Sure, I have a couple of things. So again, welcome, Commissioner Hovey, to the commission. The second one, kudos to staff for getting this new facility working. It looks great. We now finally have a home. That's that's exciting, and all the equipment and so forth looks great, so. I know some of the elements of the building have been donated by some of the industry folks, so, you know, we want to thank them as well. So, so, yeah, again, just just overall, I think staff did a fabulous job of just getting this ready, and now we have, we have a place that we can call home. So I have an announcement. If you, if anybody's interested in A P A, there's a California A P A chapter is having their conference in San Diego in October, October seventh through tenth. In twenty twenty, the A P A California will be hosted by In-N-Out Empire Section. So that's in two years, but, you know, we should definitely plan on attending and being part of the the festivities of the conference. And I want to thank Eric Ford, yeah, mentioning about the final E I R and making it, making sure that we get to see it before going to council. Thank you.
Commissioner Charleston?
I'm good.
Good?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Is the A C off? Is A C off? Did it go off? Because it seems like it's kind of warm in here now. Maybe we should.
We we can turn it back on.
Well, you don't have to now.
It was getting long, and so we turned it off.
It gets a little warm in here.
She's ready to arrest somebody back there.
I mean, you don't have to worry about it now, because we're gonna be going home anyways. Well, maybe some, and are we gonna have a clock on the wall or something? Is that, we're gonna have, okay. And. Yeah, I know, but that's the official time when it's on the wall there. My watch is not accurate anyways.
We could donate the clocks.
Striping in front of the ninety-nine cent store, when's that road gonna be opened for? We don't have a date, we don't have a schedule?
It'll be open in the next couple of weeks, because they're gonna be open on October fourth.
Yeah, we've given the go ahead for the paving that exists out there. They just need to do the striping. I know they they've got a bid. It should be happening really soon.
Okay. All right. Welcome, Andrew.
The the air conditioner is back on. It automatically turns off i- if we talk too much.
Okay. Well, you're gonna have to monitor that, because this time we talk a lot.
Just kidding. It's it, we, we're still working out the kinks on the air conditioning, and it has a an occupied sensor, and it shuts down, and then so then we just have to push the button. So most of the nights, it's not running in here, because there's no one in here, and so we just have to keep, make sure we're hearing the hum still, otherwise it turns off, so.
Yeah, it's getting warm.
Next week I'll be standing by the button.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, all right.
With service, so I I'll keep my short, I'm sorry.
I'm good. Yes, thank you.
Sorry. Well, I I love this place. I I like it. I like it, and I made my welcomes for Commissioner Hovey. But welcome again.
Thank you.
It's it's good to have new blood on the team. One thing, I know, Brian, you mentioned, you mentioned briefly about the school districts and how the different entities work with each other. One thing that we have an ongoing issue, also the truck stop brought brought that up in my mind, is a lot of the parking issues. You know how we always have the the stacking and parents, and I mean, it's an ongoing issue. It's been on for years and years. I was at an L A Unified School this past week, and what they do is they they use cones, and you you do need volunteers, and that's sort of another hurdle. But it's a volunteer staff of residents and school district teachers, and they come out, pair it up, and then they unload fifteen cars, or however they can, and then everybody moves on, right? And so technically, like, some of the 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 parents don't need to come down, they don't need to park, and then it's just fifteen cars at a time. And it's, it it works great. And so maybe we can, you know, reach out to the school districts, see what they can do. They do have an issue. They their sort of excuse, from what I've heard, is the volunteer liability issue. Now, they already have volunteers in the school, and it's the same, it's under the same insurance umbrella, if I'm not mistaken, and so that could be just a willingness, I don't know, but if they need volunteers, I'm pretty sure City of Eastville is no short of parents that's willing to.
They they call that, it's used in a lot of schools. It's it's called a valet drop-off system. And some schools even have sixth grader, seventh grader students, you know, if it's a K through six, they'll have the sixth graders, and they come open up the doors, get the kids out, and so the parents have their kids on one side of the the vehicle, and and they just offload onto the sidewalk, and then the parents don't have to get out of the car and load their kids and and whatnot. It 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 can work in in a lot of schools. It takes a lot of leadership from each school and the site administration to do that. And and so we're definitely gonna be working with the school districts to to see what we can do, but the real solution is is to create our streets so that kids can walk and bike to school, because it's good for our kids, our community, and it reduces all the traffic. And so when everybody drops their kids off at school, they they are the traffic and the congestion there, and so if we can make our streets safer, so parents feel safer to allow their kids to walk and bike to school, and we're gonna be working on some of those, because that's one of the council's strategic priorities that we identified on August twenty fourth.
Eastville Elementary does do the valet system, just so you know.
Because a lot of the other ones don't, like, especially, oh, we got tons of schools.
It's the teachers.
Yeah.
The teachers do it, so you don't even get out of your car.
Cool. That's that's it for me. Well, thank you, staff, for all the info. Thank you, residences, for attending. I will, well, actually, the next meeting will be held on October seventeenth at six P M, same location. And meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-eight P M.